Welcome to our regular scheduled board meeting of the Pocahontas School District. I'm going to open up for Dr. Arbuckle.
Okay, I appreciate it. We're going to start out with public comments. Abby, did we have anybody sign up for public comments this time? Anybody want to make public comments to the board? Okay, not seeing anything. We're going to roll right into the approval of minutes. The board members in your packet, you have the minutes from the regular meeting on July 21st and the special meeting on August 4th. Obviously, if there's any questions, be happy to answer those. Otherwise, we would just need a motion to approve.
Make a question.
Second. A motion is second to approve the minutes from the past board meetings. Everybody in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
Okay, this evening, we have our presentation of report. And I've asked Mr. Carter to come to the board and share an update regarding the K-2 screener that is required by the Learns Act and the process for utilizing that data for instruction and intervention. So Sean, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Basically, we've come in and laid out plans for the assessments. And we're starting with a K-3 screener. That basically is going to start taking place in basically next week for two of the grade levels. And then following, two weeks after that, first grade and kindergarten are going to be assessed a little bit differently. We're going to split those grades or those classrooms, and they're going to assess half of the group while the other half will be monitored, and then they're going to flip. So that'll take four days per grade level on the August 25th through the 28th. And in kindergarten, we've put them last to get them as acclimated to the building and the routine as possible, and they'll finish that kindergarten screener by the 5th of September. And you see at the bottom, just the explanation. This is basically what I gave to the staff to be as clear as possible so that they will know what's happening on those days. We also have interim for ATLAS testing, but in the fall, that only applies to third grade. That is basically a starting point for our ATLAS third grade test at the end of the year. We'll take it again in winter. At that point, second and kindergarten first will also have theirs. So third grade takes it three times, counting the summative. The other two grades will take their interim in the winter and the final in the fall, or maybe in the spring. And then last, but not least, the iReady. We have gotten on board with the rest of the district and are giving the iReady assessments. We started those last week in the computer lab, had a little glitch today, but they have already started that process of assessing with the iReady, which will give us placement for interventions. That is the information we're going to use in order to set up emerging groups per grade level. And once those are complete, which should be done in the next week, we'll be able to start finding out skill need groups.
Now, just to, I'm going to kind of add in a little bit, the K-3 screener, K-2 screener data will not actually be available to us until October. And so, we can't wait that long to make some of these decisions, instructionally, interventions, that kind of thing, and I think that's what you're referring to.
Exactly. And that screener gives us no data as to where the students are performing. It's just a flat-out screener to see how well they're performing in comparison to the rest of the state. That's why the iReady is...
So the purpose of that is?
State requirement, state data.
What's it tell you and the other administrators and the teachers?
It will tell us how well they're performing, but it won't give us the skills as specifically as the iReady will.
Okay.
I ready to break it down as to this child's performing. They mastered these skills, we need work to start working here because of that right now.
And those will be immediate?
Yes, yes. Once they finish the test, those results are there once they log out. Any other questions?
Now, will you use the iReady data to help with the individual reading plans and the individual math plans?
Yes, that's what we'll use to build up.
Because those are also required via Learns.
The screener information, basically, we don't even get growth off of the screener information. You know, you always want to see where they started and where they end. The only one we'll be able to use that with is the third grade ATLAS spectrum. And again, they're the only grade taken in the fall, so we'll have that data on my top grade.
Any other questions for Sean? Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to our informational item, I wanted to provide just a general financial summary for 2025. So you have in your packet a document that's entitled "How Pocahontas School District Spends Your Tax Dollars." And this is a document that was really generated or born out of a conversation and one of the, one of the comments that we got on some of our feedback, which was, "I already, I already pay taxes, so where's my tax money going?" And so I thought it was a legitimate question, so I wanted to share just in some big-ticket areas, and these are, these are called broad object groups. So the state, we can break down our spending fund, source of fund, you guys see that on your board report, function, broad object groups is another space where the state just looks at these broad groups of spending. And so, I thought it was beneficial to provide this to our public, so I wanted to bring this to the board. Basically, in 2025, so that would have been fiscal year 2025, the year that we just came out of, July 1, 2024 to June 30th, 2025, or 2024 to 2025, about $12.5 million were allocated or spent on salaries for certified classified staff, substitutes, overtime, bonuses, and leave. You've got the employee benefits that go with that at about 3.35 million. We also have services that we purchase from various professionals, whether that's architects, engineers, software licensing, electrical maintenance, you know, HVAC maintenance, things like that. So if they're providing some kind of professional service, we spent about $2 million on that last year.
Quite a bit, is it? What's the large portion of that going to?
Well, we could, we could break it down. I mean, it's going to, all, I mean, that too many dollars is kind of broken up into, we provided, or we, we paid our architect some fees related to a project. The foundation project at MD was built into that. So that's something that...
Although I wouldn't think that'd be more than $50,000 a year, or $50,000 for that project, so it...
Well, we could, we could look at it. It was more than $50,000, once you looked at the whole project, but that's something, if, if you'd like to see those as a whole, we can, we can certainly bring those back. Or you can come, you know, visit the, the office, we can make that happen. Utilities, repairs, maintenance, custodial contracts, sanitation, things like that, 1.5 million. Insurance, phone, internet, postage, subscriptions, 481,000. Fuel, utilities, food for school meals, textbooks, library books, so you're looking at about 2.7 million. We have capital purchases, whether it's vehicles, furniture, technology equipment, at about 400,000. And you've got some dues, testing, curriculum adoption, dyslexia services, debt payments at almost a half a million, 491,000. And then, you know, we have an area that just tracks our fund transfers and our debt principal payments, and that's about 1.5 million. So you can see that the total expenses there are $25,9363. The total revenue that was brought in was $25,490,000. And so, you've got a, you've got about $481,000 difference there on what that, the expenses and the revenue. You also see, I wanted to put on there, the main sources of our funding, and we'll highlight a couple of things when we look at the, the financials for the month. State foundation funding is the largest majority of it. Currently, you know, when we think about our property taxes, of that $25 million, $6,228,211 comes from local property tax. So that is the amount of money that the community of Pocahontas is, is committed to that 25, 25 million. It's, it's right at about 24%.
24%.
Yes, sir. It's right at about 24%. And then, as we mentioned in our last regular meeting, there is some interest that goes into that. We get some supplemental teacher salary funds, the learn, Learns money, that's about 900,000. We get about 300,000, a little over 300,000 in teacher equalization money, keeping in mind that that money is going to go away starting next year, little by little. And then there's some targeted restricted state funding, categorical funding, and we've looked at those in the past as well. So again, that's a document that we're going to, or some information we're going to be making more readily available to help answer some of those questions of, where are my tax dollars going right now?
I think it's interesting to show the percentage of property tax dollars versus state, that being 24%.
Yeah, that's, that's always been somewhat a misconception.
Yeah.
And honestly, I probably never thought that too, when I wrote down on the board, how much actually is local property tax, you know? So that's a good number to have.
And it, and it varies by community, right? I mean, it varies by community, based on a lot of different factors, one being the mileage, but another being, what is the state expectation for how much money the, the community is going to put forth? And that's based on a wealth index on that first 25 mills. You know, we talked about that, you've probably heard that everybody in the state has 25 mills that they have to, have to, to serve, and that goes back to, the state then calculates how much, based on the wealth index of Pocahontas, or the wealth index of Bentonville, or the wealth index of Jonesboro, how much should the community be expected to, to put forth? And so really, that's, that's where those numbers come from. Again, it's just informational, and I just felt like it was important to share that, since those were some of the questions we're getting on the feedback from, from our, our surveys and conversations.
I thought our budget was around 19 million a year. Can you, maybe by next meeting, kind of do that on the income side? Because if you do the math, it's only 15.5 if you figure 82 million a kid. I think the federal kicks in another, what, 2 million? Approximate?
Well, this is, this is only coming out of, this is only coming out of our, our operating.
Yes, this is the expenses. But when I say income, I mean, like, how much of the money coming in? Can you also break it down?
Oh, yeah.
Kind of like you did here?
Uh huh.
Just separate it without, because if you put two numbers, too many numbers in front of us, we get cross...
In fact, you will get, you'll, you'll get that information in our, in our next item.
Yeah, I know.
When we start talking about...
A little too many numbers for us.
Our monthly, monthly revenue.
That's also in the yearly audit, but it's taken those numbers in there too.
Correct, yes. And, and the board gets the, the period, that's why I started giving, you know, when I came in, I think previously, you were just getting a board report. And then, I felt it important to begin giving a revenue report and an expenditure report per period, so that you have that information.
Because this is what's confusing to me, because when you actually look at the budget for the year, it's 17 million, 17,109,000.
And...
And now I'm seeing 25,900,000.
Because we also have transfers in here. So when we look at, when we look at our monthly, so I'm just going to, let's move forward a minute. If we look at our monthly financials and we look at the, the, the board report, for instance...
So you're saying transfers, you're counting them as a, as a breakdown, but then you're also counting them again as a transfer? Is that what you mean?
Yes. You can run it with or without transfers.
Okay.
Because if we don't, for example, the way we do the, the accounting, if we don't include the transfers, then you'd never see how much money we spend on teacher salaries. Because literally, we transfer out of the 2,000, out of the Fund Two into Fund One, and Fund One is where we pay our teacher salaries. So if we didn't include the transfers, you would never see that, that money.
It would just, I mean, this number here is just a little deceptive to me, because, I mean, if you count transfers, because, I mean, we're only bringing in, you know, 18 and 19 million. So here, it shows we're spending 25 million, but we're not, we're just...
No, we are.
Well, yeah, let's just, now let's come up with the income, and then we know.
We can do that, yep.
Because in the past, I've always come up with it's anywhere from 17 to 19 million is what we've spent every year. And so that's why it's kind of odd to see 25 million on here.
Well, and, yeah, okay, yes, we can do that. We can, because what you're looking at is you're looking at all the funds across the whole thing. So if you run, if you drop down to the monthly financials and you're looking at the revenue summary, then you'll see that in this period, in 2001, which is where all of our, all of our tax money, tax money goes, and you look, period one, so in July of last year, the district received from the, from the treasurer, from the county treasurer, plus from the state for our foundation money, 1, 1.1 million dollars. This year, we received 1.178 million. So in essence, the question should be, when we're looking at that, is, why do we have an additional $76,500 this year that we didn't have last year?
Well, that's from the 8,200 versus 7,700 per kid, probably.
It is two things. One, it's an increase in foundation funding, so that's that part. But the second is delinquent taxes. There were people who didn't pay their taxes last year, who are now caught up and have paid their taxes, and that revenue comes in as well, right? And so, we have a line item. Like, I can break down even farther, you talk about numbers, right? So in 2001, that's where all that money is going, all that revenue that's coming in. But I can break that down, and I can show you how much comes in from taxes from the first half of the year, how much comes in from the second half of the year, how much comes in on delinquent taxes, how much comes in on, you know, when, when somebody doesn't pay their taxes for a long time, and the county sees, or the state seizes the land, and they sell the land, we have proceeds that come off that. So I can, I mean, yeah, you can look at all that, be happy to bring that to you. It may be more confusing than it is helpful, but I'd be glad to provide all that information if that's something that...
Well, just yearly is all I would look for, you know, just the same way you did it with...
So, okay, so this may help. Tonight, we're going to ask the board to allow me to meet the state requirement of being underneath the 20% net legal balance, right? That's a, that's a transfer of funds. Once we do that, then we will make that change in period 13. Period 13 is the end of the fiscal year. So in September, at our regular board meeting in September, my intention is to bring you period two, which would be August, to look at, but we will also bring period 13, which is the year-end fiscal 2025, and you can look at all of that at that point. Would that work?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
I don't, the way I do it is I look at 1,890 kids times, I think that was what last year we got to use, times 8,200. That comes to 15 and a half million dollars, and then, of course, we get a couple million federal. And then you get all this extra stuff that you talk about, you know, the extra...
Yeah, and, well, you get the categorical money, you get the...
And that's what I, that's the question mark for me, is all that extra stuff.
Right. Well, and, and that's all in the reports that you get, but we can kind of work through that. But in essence, yeah, what you're doing is you're just looking at the foundation. What you're not calculating is you're also not calculating the excess debt, or the debt revenue that we're getting on the 7.81 mills, based on who pays their taxes. So we have, and, and we have all that because the treasurer sends us money every month.
What is our collection rate? You know, it varies, 92% is on run?
That's what, we usually base it around 90%, but the last time I looked at it, which has been probably six to eight months ago, yeah, it was in that neighborhood of 92 to 93%. Okay, so going back to the, the financials, you have your board report that you normally receive, you have the revenue summary and the expenditure summary for August. The reason there is no revenue year-to-date budget is because we haven't passed a budget yet. This board passes a budget every year in September, we'll pass the budget in September, we'll upload that information, and then you will have a running understanding of where are we at when we look at revenue versus budgeted revenue? Are we in front, are we behind? Same thing with expenses. You don't have anything in there for the budget yet, but you do see that in those expenses. I will point out that if you look at the expenses in the operating fund 2,000, you'll notice that those are about $122,000. We've, we've already spent about $122,000 more than we spent this time last year. That is wrapped up in those Intu Math textbooks and technology expenses.
Does anything stand out? It looks like just most of your negative balances are pre-cake.
Are federal, yes, that, that hasn't come in. We won't get those dollars, start getting those dollars until September. That's why we run those in the, in the negative to begin with.
That's good.
We just need a, if there's no more questions, we just need a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
The motion is second to approve these financial statements. Everybody in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, item 7.2 is the net legal balance. At the end of 2020, or FY 2025, our net legal balance was 4.871 million dollars. Just to give you a, a quick understanding or reminder that the net legal balance is the, is basically the state's way that they measure the health of a district. And so in essence, what it is, is it takes your operating, takes your debt service, takes your building fund, and then subtracts out your categoricals, right? And then they come up with a number. That number that the state has come up with for Pocahontas is 3.886 million dollars. So in order to meet the state requirement, I have to get us below that number, okay? So in essence, we do that in period 13. I, my plan is to, we have to move, we have, you, and the state tells you, you can only accomplish getting under 20% in a few ways. One of those is moving money into the building fund. Well, since we have, we have a desire to build a project, that's not a bad thing for us, right? So the net legal balance must be reduced by a minimum amount of 984,000. My intention is to move a million dollars, but I'm asking for approval to transfer enough funds to meet the state requirement to be under the 20% net of legal balance. Why am I doing that and not giving you an actual dollar amount? Because there may be some expenses that we move around, and if we move around expenses, it may change that number, right? So next month, I'll come back to you with period 13 with a closeout, this is how much we moved, this is what we have in our, our building fund at this point. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to, to address those, but in essence, really what I'm asking for is a motion to allow a transfer of funds to meet the state requirement to be under 20% of the net legal balance.
I have a question. We had it 600,000 in our budget to automatically transfer. Has it already been done, or is that part of that money that we're...
We've, we've already transferred, it was, we've transferred 500,000 at this point.
So we're going to look at it around 1.5 million, we'll be raising our, our, our building fund this year then?
Correct.
Do we need the motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, my gosh.
Second. Motion is second to approve this transfer into our building fund from our checking account. Everybody in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.3 is an addition to some of those Intu Math textbooks. In essence, what we've realized is we need a few more of those. I think it's like around 35 additional Intu Math resources for, for K-5, for each grade. This was something that I believe I spoke to each one individually about, and so, at this point, I just need the approval to go ahead and do that, so we can get those here. Um, and so at this point, I just need the approval to go ahead and do that, um, so we can get those here.
We have a motion and a second to approve these extra expenditures on textbooks. Everyone in favor, say yes. Yes, motion passes four to zero.
Okay, um, item seven point four, in April, um, the, uh, the board may remember that in April, I brought to you a, a recommendation to increase the amount that we were paying for instructional after-hour duties. So, um, that, we were paying that at eleven dollars an hour. We took that to fifteen dollars an hour for class buy, excuse me, and thirty-five dollars for certified. That brought us in line, and the reason we did that is, one reason is to bring us in line with what we were paying on the federal side of the Twenty-First Century Learning Grant. Um, and so we began, uh, looking at our, what we're paying for, um, additional support, for example, like our athletic game management support. So currently, we are still paying eleven dollars an hour for game management support at all of our, you know, football, volleyball, basketball. We're talking, um, clock keepers, we're talking gate, uh, gate workers, uh, those that keep the book, those that keep the shot clock, uh, things like that. And so I am recommending, um, that the board, uh, or asking the board for a motion to approve moving all of our athletic game management positions to a fifteen dollar per hour pay rate.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the increase from eleven hour to fifteen an hour. Everybody in favor, say yes. Yes, motion passes four to zero.
Okay, seven point five, um, this is a, a bus purchase. So this evening, um, we're asking permission to, uh, or approval to purchase a new, uh, wheelchair accessible bus. Um, the last sped bus that we purchased was, uh, a microbus, and it was, um, wheelchair accessible, I did look at that, um, so we did confirm that. Um, but since it's a microbus, it's, you know, capped at, at fourteen, fifteen kiddos that didn't have a wheelchair, obviously less than that since it does have a wheelchair accessibility. So we need a bit, little bit larger bus. Um, Mr. Rogers' bus is, uh, currently a pretty old, it's a well-used bus. Um, it's what we use every day to run our route for our physically, or our kiddos with physical disabilities who need wheelchairs. And so if something were to happen to that bus, you know, were to blow, uh, you know, a water pump or something was, it just wasn't functional, then right now, we wouldn't have a way to get those kids home. Um, and so that one's pretty imperative that, um, that we look at, at, you know, adding to the fleet that sped bus. So you have a quote, um, for that bus. Let me, uh, pull that up real quick. Um, and if we're, if we're looking at, this one does come with seat belts, right? Right? Um, and it is a forty-two passenger, so it's a, a little bit larger. Um, you'll notice that the quote on that is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars.
It looks like it will be the end of the school year, possibly before it gets delivered. So it's up to two hundred and forty days.
Yeah, I know, we looked at it, this is before all the federal news came out. We were about to do this a couple of months ago. Uh, he was saying, uh, about forty more term, right? So I would anticipate, I can't find the quote in the order.
Say that again. Uh, yeah, it's the Central State's bus sales. So that's who we typically, yeah, that's who we've typically purchased from.
A motion is second to approve this bus purchase for a hundred and fifty-seven, nine hundred and forty-six. Everybody in favor, say yes. Yes, motion passes four to zero.
Um, okay, item seven point six, um, I've been visiting with, uh, with Justin, and I have a desire to, uh, start moving us as we can away from Chromebooks. Um, and so the, the first, uh, item, if you will, on that list is to move teachers off of Chromebooks. And so we, we have devised a plan to, um, migrate teachers from Chromebooks to laptop devices. And we can use federal money to do that. So this is money that is reimbursed back to us. Um, with the possibility of those federal monies ending in FY twenty-seven and us not getting that, that money again, now would be the time to take advantage of that, uh, that reimbursable money. So you have two quotes. You have one from, um, I believe it's C D W, I always get the letters mixed up. Um, D C W, see, I told you it was going to. That, uh, that quote for, um, those hundred and eighty, uh, laptops are a hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. You also have a Dell quote that is for the exact same machine. The specifications are the same. You'll notice that the cost is about twice as much. So, um, this evening, we are, I'm recommending that, uh, there would be a motion to approve the quote from D C W to purchase these hundred and eighty laptops for teachers.
So how long ago did we purchase the Chromebooks for the teachers?
Um, I believe those were purchased with S R dollars, and they are, um, at the end of their lifespan, so I'm going to say five, six years. Because I know those Chromebooks, at most, they're good for seven years before they...
Well, I voted on some Chromebooks about a couple, three years ago, but it was probably students.
Yes, we, we have wrote, I say, the district has had a history of rotating a number of Chromebooks every year. Um, and so every year, you would be dealing with this and have, have dealt with this for a long time. Um, again, you know, I, I just have a, I have a, um, I'm not a huge fan of the Chromebooks. Yes, they're cheap, um, but they are a consumer device only, and I would like to put things in the hands of our teachers and things in the hand of our kiddos that make them a producer, not just a consumer.
Make a motion to approve the data center warehouse quote.
Motion is second to approve the data center warehouse quote of a hundred and forty-three, six forty-three. Everybody in favor, say yes. Yes, motion passes four to zero.
Um, okay, we have, um, we've reached the, the superintendent comments section, so I just wanted to, um, point out a couple of things. Um, this week, we were notified that, um, uh, Cave City was going to move to eight-man football. So that's important to us because Cave City was our homecoming date. So we have been working with, uh, the coaches and the, um, sponsors. We are moving our homecoming date because right now, that homecoming date is an open date, and we are looking for, um, uh, an opponent. But it's not, I mean, we need to do homecoming on a different night. So we are, uh, moving homecoming to October twenty-fourth. That's the Westside game. Feel like that's the, the best game for, um, us to, you know, given, yeah, I mean, given, given the, when you look at the schedule, that's a, a great date for us. So we are going to do that. Um, Coach Casey is, as I said, looking for an opponent. Uh, when I talked to him this morning, we haven't had a lot of luck, but we are working through some of those.
What happens if we can't do, is it a nine-one season?
You know, automatic win thirteen, nothing against Cave City. Everybody, so I mean, everybody basically gets a thirteen, nothing winning.
So it's not going to be, like, terrible if they don't fill it?
Some people tell me, west, west side is our opponent, but that's not true. That's just the date for the homecoming.
No, west side is our, that is the, that is the game with west side.
I thought you said we're looking for an opponent.
We're looking for an opponent to fill the Cave City spot.
Oh, that's, okay, gotcha.
Or the lead field spot, which only plays for a lifetime.
But it doesn't affect us if they can't fill in with a game?
No.
I think it's crazy to know what they do back in the season, but...
Well, sometimes, I guess, new...
We've had that conversation too.
I even think they would allow that, allow it.
They may not know.
They, I mean, they probably knew a long time ago they didn't have a player, so, okay.
Um, okay, uh, the second item that I just wanted to bring to your attention, um, you know, there's been a lot of, um, a lot of press and a lot of, um, talk about the, uh, public school kiddos having access to free breakfast, and that is true. Um, one of the questions that I asked in a meeting that we were in recently with superintendents is, I was also assuming that that meant pre-K students would get to eat free breakfast. Um, the short version is when the, when A A E A, Dr. Duncan looked into it for me, or for us, she came back and said, no, Desi was not including pre-K kiddos in the free breakfast program. Um, now, we had already started school by then, and so, you know, I had already made the decision that, hey, they should be included, so we're going to let our pre-K kiddos eat for free. Um, when I got that information, we started reaching out to, uh, Desi. We started reaching out to our, um, our local, uh, representation in Little Rock. And on Friday, that was on Wednesday, on Friday, I got a message that said, uh, Desi was reevaluating whether or not pre-K kiddos would meet the, the letter of the law for free breakfast. What the law says is, it says that every kiddo in public school should be offered a free breakfast. Well, my contingent is, in Pocahontas, the pre-K kids are in public school. They are in the elementary school, they are just a few doors down from the kindergarten kiddos. And I do not like the idea of looking a parent in the eyes and saying, your kiddo who is, you know, thirty feet from a kindergartner can't eat free breakfast while they can. I think that's a tough sell. Um, and so we are waiting for a final determination from Desi on whether or not pre-K kiddos are going to eat free. Um, my contingent is, even if they come back and say they don't, I think as a district, that's something we need to take care of. I think we need to take care of our pre-K kiddos. Um, we have fifty, no, sixty.
And they probably, probably all don't need breakfast, or is that part of their day?
Well, I, I think, my, my understanding is, it's going to be like part of their day, right? It's part of the, the curriculum, right, teaching them those skill sets. Um, now, as I explained it to somebody else, when you're four years old, if all the other four-year-olds are in a line, you're going to get in a line.
Yeah.
Right? And if all the other four-year-olds are eating, then unless the teacher or your mom or what, you know, said, here's your breakfast, go eat it over here, you're probably going to get in line, and they're going to give you a tray, and you're going to take it. And that is that kiddo in my world, when that happens, when that kiddo gets in line, whether it's a pre-K kiddo or a, an eighteen-year-old senior, when that kiddo gets in line for breakfast, that is them requesting a free breakfast, right? And I think, I think we need to honor that. Um, so that, that may impact our bottom line this time next year, but I think that's a, a small price to pay for our families. Um, the, uh, the other, one of, a couple of things, um, you are probably aware that we sent out a community involvement survey. Abby has been, uh, a tremendous help in getting all of that information, uh, on Facebook, getting all that information out to our public. Uh, I hope you're seeing that, I feel like I am. Just to give you a, a quick and dirty where we're at right now on that, so far, we have had a hundred and three responses to that community involvement survey. Now, just for those of you, those who may not be acquainted with that, that is asking specific questions, kind of Chris, what you were wanting to do, which I think was a great idea, asking specific questions on what would you like to see in the new building? What is important to you in the new building? So I thought I'd bring to you this evening. We'll, we'll, um, unpack this much more at a, at a future meeting. Um, but the top three things that our community has said to us, number one, most important to them, is special education classrooms. Uh, about fifty-five percent of the hundred and three people who have answered it said, we want to make sure that we have adequate and appropriate special education spaces in classrooms for our students with disabilities. Um, number two was gym capacity appropriate for a state tournament? That was the number, number two item. And number three, um, was safety and security. People want to know that the building is, provides a level of safety and security that the current building just isn't able to provide. So we'll unpack those more in the future, but that is, um, the top three things that we have gotten so far from those hundred and three responses. Okay, any questions about that? Um, and then I just wanted to give you, current enrollment as of today is eighteen hundred and sixty-seven students, one thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven. Um, to just kind of give you an idea of, of where we're at on that. Any questions about that? Okay, um...
Can I go back to something?
Yeah.
So I should have caught it with the board report, but, um, you, you told me the five hundred was already transferred to the savings account?
I believe it was.
Wouldn't that be in this August first, or has it been done since August first? This board report, it shows sixteen point eight million.
No, it, it would have been done, um, I believe it was done in the previous period.
Well, I'm pretty sure we've been keeping around that amount, so I would, thought it would have been about seventeen, three, seventeen, five. And also, the interest they pay, does that transfer automatically into our savings account? Because it's the savings account that we're getting so much interest off of.
No, and, and it's, it's not our saving account. So we're getting interest on all of it. And so what Kim does, when she gets the monthly interest, is she breaks that monthly interest up and provides the adequate amount of interest that, for example, the elementary school activity funds, they earn interest. Well, that, that interest should go back to the elementary school. The high school coke fund earns interest. That money should go back to Christian and the coke, coke fund over there. We do have interest on our building fund, and that money goes back...
Well, our building fund doesn't seem to grow throughout the year, though. Well, shouldn't it grow every month if she's putting interest in there? Or is that the nine hundred thousand we just approved, the million dollars we just approved? Is that part of interest?
Um, my understanding, I believe she's moving it in every, every month.
Because I don't, I think it's been seventeen million for the last year is what it's averaged throughout every month.
When do we get our, our financial audit? When do they come in and do that?
Uh, they'll, will come in and do that usually at the middle of September and stay till about Thanksgiving, and then we get the data, we get the information that the board looks at in February.
So they monitor that the interest is going into the correct accounts?
They make sure that we are following the accounting procedures as approved by the state. Yeah, um...
You don't do that right now.
Well, I mean, that's, yeah, those are, if I have those questions beforehand, I can be ready to answer.
Because I mean, a nine hundred thousand a year is substantial, so every month, it should go up a hundred thousand dollars based off our interest in the building fund, you know, so...
Okay, um, anything else there? If not, then we can move right into the personnel agenda. So you have the, the personnel agenda in front of you. Um, we would recommend that the board approve the resignations of Keely Watson as sped para and Sarah Murphy as sped para. We'd also recommend the hiring of Jennifer McHouston, a one-on-one para at M D, Deborah Hunt sped para at M D, Cheyenne Vance, a sped para at P E S, Jacob Avery, the A L E para at the high school, and Angelica Smith, uh, sped para at the elementary school.
Would you possibly approve that recommendation?
Motion is second to approve these, uh, resignations and new hires. Um, everybody in favor, say yes. Yes, motion passes four to zero.
And then you have a, a list of the, um, student transfers there. Um, we did, we have, uh, approved all of those. Some, uh, you may have seen a, a previous list that had a couple of kiddos on there. I believe they've, uh, rescinded their, um, transfer request, and so that's why they are no longer appearing on the, um, on the list.
Why are these people waiting on the day of school?
It is, it is a little surprising.
A lot of stress.
Yeah, I know, right? Well, and, and the truth is, our, our enrollment will fluctuate probably until Labor Day, right? Where it will just, um, move up or down based on what kids are wanting to do at that time, so... Um, if there's any other questions about anything that's either on the agenda or not on the agenda, we can certainly, uh, address those, but if not, then we would just need a motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.